Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our November 1st meeting. Please note, council is in full attendance except for Mr. Bachnight. Of course, I want to recognize we do have some scouts in the audience. Caught out of the corner of my eye, y'all saluting when we did the pledge. And I can tell you that when Mr. Guish and I were both scout leaders in the past, we had to kind of stop ourselves from doing that, from saying "to" at the end of a pledge. So it's kind of funny, but we're glad to have y'all. And I know we'll hear from y'all in a few minutes. Let's see, first on our agenda is items from council. Buddy, have, I have a few items.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I do know that we're going to pull, I want to mention pulling D3, which is a resolution regarding the Victoria Main Street program, simply because the director would like a little time to review that. She hadn't had time, so we put it on a later agenda. So D3 will be pulled. We're not going to discuss her vote on that item. Also, one thing I want to say, we do have, towards the end of our agenda, even though it's fairly short, a city manager report on the Victoria Parks Improvement Association, which is the golf course at Riverside. And if we have people here that would like to speak to that, what I can do is reopen citizens communication at that time. What we'd like, and certainly when we do citizens communication here in a moment, anybody can speak about anything. But I would encourage those who choose to, who want to talk about the parks golf course, to wait till after that, and I'll reopen citizens communication at that time. I know the chairman of that board, I don't, Mr. Miles is not here. He's going to, oh, he's in the back.
Oh, yeah, the inspector, okay.
So we want to hear from you, so if you would, after our city manager report, I'll reopen citizens communication to you and anyone else. Okay. I just think it'd be a better flow of information that way. Anyone else have anything? If not, I do want to come in, the Parks Department, while we're here. Had multiple Halloween-related events in the park that went very well. And as always, staff is always there and helpful. I know the food truck festival was Saturday, and the zoo had their haunted house. And I heard lots of screaming and whatnot, so I think they were successful. And even some of our very own city staff volunteered, which is commendable. They helped save the day, matter of fact, I think. So I would appreciate all those good events. Okay, council, do y'all have any? Me tonight, okay. Okay, so what we'll do now is open citizens communications.
You're going to do your proclamation?
Oh, golly, I'm sorry, we have a proclamation. And then, Ms. Elise, you do have the Torres School Zone issue.
Right.
Okay, let's do the proclamation first.
This is a proclamation signed by Mayor Paul Palosik in honor of Municipal Courts Week, and it reads in part as follows. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting the quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas the city of Victoria is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Now, therefore, I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 7th through November 11th, 2016, as Municipal Courts Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Victoria.
Several of her staff are back here at work.
It's relieving. We greatly appreciate all the work they do in municipal court under Sherri's leadership. Thank you, Sherri.
Very true. They conduct a lot of business every day. And we don't hear a lot out of you, so that means it's going well. Thank you very much. Well deserved. Okay, Ms. Elise, you wanted to discuss Torres Elementary.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map, the chalky.
Lynn can walk through what we've come up with. You know, two weeks ago, we mentioned that a gentleman had called staff, and they were already working on a solution. So he can talk about his proposed solution.
Yeah, so at each year, places are placed an aerial photo. And of course, it's up on the screens for the public to view. But what you see here, the red, the intersection of the two red lines there is the intersection of Delmar and Lone Tree. And that is, of course, the request has been to make that intersection a part of a school zone. And so the yellow lines to the right of that picture are the existing school zones for Torres Elementary. Includes a section of Lone Tree Road, as well as a section of Anthony Road. The yellow that you see in the center and on the far left of that photo are the existing school zones for O'Connor Elementary. Includes a portion of Delmar, as well as a portion of Loa and a short section of Lone Tree Road. The other thing shown on that photo is a hatched area. And the hatched area that is north of Lone Tree Road, from Loa west, all the way extending beyond Anthony and even off the photo, as well as the hatched area on the south of Lone Tree Road, from Delmar going west across Anthony and off of the photo again. That is the attendance zone for Torres Elementary. So you can see that there are children living in Mayfair there to the, I guess, the north and east of that Delmar-Lone Tree intersection that do attend Torres Elementary. And so that, you know, could potentially be walking from their homes through that intersection and on down to Torres. We also spoke to the principal at Torres Elementary, who said that, yes, they would support extending a school zone across that intersection. And so our recommendation to you this evening, after looking at this, is that rather than putting another separate school zone around that intersection, we would recommend just extending the existing school zones and making that all one big, everything that's shown there in color, all one big school zone. The section on Delmar is, the yellow section is currently 25 between the hours of 7:00 and 8:15 a.m. And again, between the hours of 3:00 and 4:00, we would recommend leaving that at 25, just extending it north to include the red section there. And then the yellow school zones on Lone Tree Road are 20 miles an hour, those same hours. And we would just recommend, again, extending that 20 mile an hour zone during those times to include the rest of that Lone Tree segment shown in red there. If council by consensus tells us that they want to move forward with that, we would bring back a first reading on a traffic ordinance revision the next meeting, November 15th. And then the second and third reading would come the first meeting in December.
I'll answer any questions you may have.
I think it's an excellent idea, because at least you crossed the whole intersection right there.
We'll come back with the ordinance on the 15th then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, nothing further from council. Sorry, I was going a little too fast there a while ago. We'll go ahead and open citizens communications for anyone who'd like to address the council. So now would be the time to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There's plenty of time.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Schneider with Boy Scout Troop 364. And today, sorry, and on behalf of our troop, we are, I am presenting an invitation to y'all. When the flag has served its usefulness and is no longer suitable to represent our country, land of the free and the home of the brave, it must be retired and replaced. The U.S. Flag Code reads, "The flag, when it is in such condition that it is no longer fitting emblem for display, should be destroyed in a dignified way, preferably by burning." Boy Scouts of America recommend this should be done in a simple manner with dignity and respect. Be sure the flag is reduced to ashes, unrecognizable as a former flag. In keeping with the law of our land and the recommendations of the Boy Scouts of America, we represent to you this invitation to join us and to participate with us in the ceremony, beginning at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, November 12, 2016, at Riverside Park in Grover's Bend. If y'all have any questions, move right here, and you'll have a bigger invitation in y'all's boxes.
Very good, thank you.
Question?
Yes, question?
Yes, I have a question. If we have a used flag, can we bring it to for the ceremony?
Yes, ma'am. We will be at Our Lady of Victory's cafeteria on Mondays at 7:00, it's 7:00 to 8:15. We'll be there, and you can drop it off there.
Anyone can bring one and drop it off if we need to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just ask council, too, that if you, I'm going to try real hard to go, but if enough of you want to go, you might mention it to the city attorney or city manager, because we may have to post a meeting if of us show up. I need to look at my calendar, but I'm almost positive I can be there. Just FYI. And just for the scouts, I'm sorry, sir, anytime four or more of us gather somewhere, we have to post it as a meeting and let the public know, because we want to make sure that anytime we're gathered, if we talk about any city business, it has to be open to the public. But we appreciate your invitation greatly, so. Okay, citizens communication still open. Just state your name and address for the record.
Nice to meet y'all. My name is Rudolph Martinez. And I am, you had a picture up there of Lone Tree and Anthony Street up there a while ago? Well, I live on the far left of that site, which is called, what I call, "The Land That Time Forgot." Okay, the reason I call it that, because we have issues there for the past 20 years. And this is Lone Tree Edition. We have, recently, we just brought, somebody brought up about safety on Lone Tree Road, school zones and stuff like that. And I don't have no problem with that. But the only problem I have is our neighborhood, you know? Somebody always seems to forget that there's a neighborhood there. We, excuse me, put my glasses on, because when you get my age, you can't see anymore.
Okay, take your time.
Okay. We have had issues with street problems, Band-Aids, street problems, street flooding, standing water, code problems, animal control problems, and last of all, safety issues. Let me explain a little bit about that, a little history about that. Street problems. Rio Grande, back in the 90s, was a roller coaster ride. I don't know if y'all seen on TV, where it came out. We had a special done on it, about the way, the way the city does potholes. They call it a Band-Aid. They back up a truck, put asphalt in there and run over it. And that's, that's the problem we had. And then it rained the next day, and it's bup again. And Rio Grande was full of potholes. It was a patch on top of another patch. And they call it a Band-Aid. They just put a Band-Aid, and that's good for them. Then we had flooded in our streets. I'm over there 20 years ago. I lived in the neighborhood before. We never had any problem problems. And we don't, this is not even a flood plain area. We have a hard rain. It'd take an hour for the water to go down. That's another problem. Code problems. We have people there, owners that own property, but they don't cut the grass. I don't understand that. I don't have any problem with people owning property. You can own them if you want to, but maintain it. Don't let them call every two or three months, you know, "You got to cut your grass." That's not my job to keep up, you know, your grass, your property. Animal control. In our days, we used to have dog catchers. People go and catch a dog. You got a dog, they go catch it. And now, we have ice cream trucks. The dog pound goes through there in our neighborhood. Dogs are running behind it like an ice cream truck. Nobody gets down and catches a dog. You have to catch the dog with them. You have to call them. You know, and if you don't call before Friday, you're stuck with that dog for the rest of the weekend. And then safety issues. Well, before I get to safety, the reason I call it is "The Land That Time Forgot." When they did Lone Tree, there was going to be concrete. They say, "Hey, we're going to be great. We're going to have concrete on our street." Stop the Delmar. Well, what happened? Can anybody tell me why there's no concrete pavement between Delmar and Stockbar? Anybody can tell me why? Well, I'm going to give you a reason why. Budget. Budget. There's a trench there. I call it a drainage ditch. That costs more money. There's no money in there for that, I guess, you know? You have to make drainage. You don't want to do that, so you put pavement. So there we go back to the roller coaster road again, you know, sooner or later. I'm running out of time. I don't have enough time. But I've dealt with Ken Gill years. After 20 years of dealing with the city, finally, after 20 years, we get one good road out of maybe 20 in our neighborhood, and that's Anthony. And because that's what I fought tooth and nail with Ken Gill. And I don't blame Ken Gill, because Ken only works with what he has. You know, if you give Ken a budget, he's going to work with it. But every budget we get over there in our area, drainage. Do you know how they fix our drainage? Deeper trenches, deeper trenches. Okay, fine. The way they fix their road, they get a procedure where they, they crumble up all the asphalt. They don't take it anywhere else. They leave it right there with that, and put dirt over it. And then they, they don't compack it, they just pack it. And all you're doing is putting a blanket over that road. I called Ken Gill, and I told him, "Ken, I'm going to call you in nine months to let you know that these roads are worthless." It didn't take nine months. Took six months. I called him Ken Gill. We're on a first-name basis now. I said, "Ken, look at this road. It's full of cracks." He said, "Yeah, Mr. Martinez, all these roads have hairline cracks, you know, surface cracks." I said, "Ken, well, you can stick your hand in there. It's not a surface crack. It's a crack." You know what I mean? Couple of weeks later, there they go, filling up all them cracks. Look like a snail trail runs through there. You can look at it. You can go by there. And then the compaction, all the sides of the road, we're back to square one. We don't have a road. You have to ride in the middle of the road. That's not acceptable. They, the procedure they used in our neighborhood is no longer used. Why isn't it longer used? Because of the fix it had on our neighborhood. Back to square one, no roads. Who's going to come back and fix all the roads that were used by this procedure? When they did Rio Grande, hey, I mean, Sam Houston, what did they put all that trash and gravel in our neighborhood? All the, the neighborhood I called Delmar was full of sand. I told Ken, "Hey, Ken, how about putting a fence there?" "Well, they're going to be there temporary." What happened with a temporary fence? You know, maybe 10 years from now, people go knock on your door. "Hey, I have a health problem, because all that loose earth that was flying around on those houses on Delmar," you know, "temporary." If you get sick, well, it ain't going to be temporary. It's going to be a lifetime.
I understand. If you could conclude your-
And getting back to this-
If you could conclude your comments, Mr. Martinez. I don't want to rush you. I appreciate you being here.
Well, let me tell you about the school zone. Okay, the school zone is fine. But whoever went down Lone Tree did not go in Anthony. We have, the school has a sidewalk that goes nowhere. Lone Tree has a sidewalk that goes from Anthony all the way to Delmar. We have a sidewalk that goes from the fire station to the end of the school property. And after that, grassland. How are the kids going to get across that? They have a school, they have a good school crossing right there on Anthony. They cross these kids over, and after that, they're in their own. There's no sidewalk. Nothing. They can, Mr. Martinez, we have a budget, again. You know, there's a trench there, and we have to be a bigger budget, more money involved. Okay, how much does the kids' stuff worth?
Mr. Martinez, I appreciate your comments, just out of respect for everyone else's time, if you could-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. But I don't want to say, you know, if you're going to be safe on one street, be safe on both sides of the street.
And it is helpful that you communicate-
That's okay. I don't mind you giving me lower budgets. It's the way you do the budgets. Why do we have to get the short end of the stick? We always get a low budget, you know? The drainage, they get deeper. The water, the procedure don't work, you know? So all I'm saying, we're getting left out. You know, why can't our kids have a sidewalk? That's all I ask, you know?
Understood. We appreciate you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, citizens communication still open. To talk about anything whatsoever, name and address for the record, and try to stick to the time limit if possible. And of course, remember, I will reopen it just for the discussion on the Riverside Golf Course later, so. Okay, seeing no one else get up, we'll move into the rest of our agenda. We do have two ordinances to vote on, so I'll close citizens communications, and we'll move into C1.
C1 is an ordinance vacating, closing, and abandoning an alley in accordance with Section 20-12 of the Victoria City Code, retaining an easement for utilities and declaring an effective date.
Second, we have a motion in a second.
I'm going to abstain on this because of professional conflict.
Okay. So will it require five positive votes to pass?
No.
Just a majority out of the five? Okay. Just, any questions? Excuse me, any questions about C1? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. C2 is?
C2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 14 to create an exception for itinerant vendor permit requirements in certain city parks, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion, second. Thank you.
No.
Questions?
Nope, no hearing. Sorry.
Okay. And we saw this last week, and I think everyone is familiar with why we're doing it, so. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. They see two passes. And consent agenda has three items in it.
The first is the approval of minutes of regular meeting of October 18, 2016. Second is a resolution authorizing the purchase of three tire machines and an adapter kit for vehicle maintenance from Mohawk Resources Limited in the amount of $42,650.48, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary and declaring an effective date. And the last is a resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement parts for equipment at the city's surface water treatment plant from Equable Water Technologies LLC in the amount of $38,246, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase and declare an effective date.
So move, we adopt all.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for all three consent agenda items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ayes have it. They pass, and we have one resolution.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant programmatic agreement with the Salvation Army, a Georgia corporation doing business as the Salvation Army Unit at Victoria, Texas, regarding the public facilities improvement program in the amount of $43,140 and declaring an effective date.
So move. Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second. Is there any discussion about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. I'm sorry, I think I said we had one item. We have three. Forgive me. One of those evenings. Okay, so E1 passes. E2?
E2 is a resolution appointing a municipal court judge and declaring an effective date.
Would y'all like to hear from Mr. Jacob, or just go ahead and get a motion?
If I may, Ms. Heinold is in the audience, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
We're both here to address any questions you may have.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you ready for the job?
I am. I'm looking forward to serving the community, and I definitely appreciate that opportunity.
Wonderful, okay. Well, you came with recommendations, so I appreciate that.
I hope they were all good.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I think so. And, you know, just for the public, this is about 10 hours a week work as a municipal court judge, so it is a part-time job. So we appreciate when we can get anyone good to come in, and it's an interesting position for sure, so. Okay, council, did y'all have questions? Need a motion? Make a motion and adopt E2.
Second.
I do want to hire her, so. Absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Got to get through these details now.
Wait before she changes her mind.
Well, we don't want her to change her mind. We want you to stay, so welcome aboard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we do have item E3. Go ahead.
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay an administrative penalty of $875 to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to settle field citation number 12439 and declaring an effective date.
Counsel? Get a motion.
I move to adopt.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions? I see Mr. Short ready to answer. Any questions?
What was this on?
Okay, this is on the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the Odom Street Wastewater Plant. In May of 2016, we hired a consultant to put this plan together and file it with the TCEQ. During, that's a requirement for all wastewater treatment plants, that they have a stormwater pollution prevention plan. During the preparation of that plan, the consultant misinterpreted some of the language in the rule that specified when the plan had to be filed. And so as a result, it was filed late. TCEQ issued a field citation in the amount of $875 for that. As soon as the consultant found out about the citation, they immediately said, "Well, we will pay the cost of that. We made the mistake. We misinterpreted the rule." So, and staff, in fact, has already withheld that $875 from their payment. What we need now is authorization to go ahead and make the payment to the TCEQ. The plan has been filed. We are in compliance.
But it was because of the report was late, not there was anything else that we-
That's correct. It was a late.
Hold that plan up again? Okay, so that's what, all right. It's just, you know, missing one date is, I guess, a minor detail, but at least they're agreed to make it whole and pay that for us, so, okay.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, no, we have a motion and a second, I believe. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Short. City manager reports.
Carol's getting up to explain an award his department has received for recycling leadership. Beautiful award sitting there in front of Lynn. It's heavy.
I was wondering what that was.
I thought so, too.
It is. It's-
Good evening.
It's recycled glass.
Each year, the State Recycling Alliance of Texas meets. It's a conglomeration of cities from the state of Texas, as well as private industry representatives from all of the big garbage companies, recycling companies, manufacturing companies. And this year, we received an award on October 18th for an outstanding recycling special event. Each year, due to a lot of work from the staff at the Environmental Department, we raise money to bring vocal trash to Victoria to talk about not just recycling- we raise money to bring vocal trash to Victoria to talk about not just recycling, but they hit on things such as bullying and reuse and different things. And each year, we work with about 8,000 students to get to go through and see them. And we were recognized for having those events. This last year, we did the one with the school district. The school district's a part of this. They give us money every year to help put this on for their VISD kids. But also, what's important to note is 63,000 pounds of trash this year. I'm sorry, 60, yeah, pounds. That's only bottles and cans. That's not counting all the cardboard, all the paper, all the tin that they put in. That's just water bottles and cans. If you go to businesses around town, you may notice some of the gyms, some of the other places around town have actual containers that the schools have worked with these businesses to give us your cans, give us your bottles, so that we can get credit for those. Everybody knows that the school district received $40,000 this year for us having placed first place and then multiple schools in the top 10. So, we were recognized for that. We think it's a great award and we plan to keep it up. I want to introduce Kate Garcia and Brianna Plonkett. They're the ones who do raise all the money to do this, so when we bring vocal trash in, it doesn't cost us any, anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
Good job.
I have, you know, I've been privileged to attend the ceremony where the check is awarded to VISD. That's nationwide, right?
Yep.
That's, and it goes back to the job y'all do to convince those kids to do all that. It's really amazing. I mean, it's quite a testament to y'all's work, so thank you very much.
The next report, Scarlett has some board appointments she wants to discuss with you.
Mayor and counsel, in your package, you'll find a CM1 regarding the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation. If you'll remember, back in September, we appointed Councilman De La Garza to fill the unexpired term. And now, all three of the members' terms are up for reappointment. And those members are Councilman De La Garza, Councilman Bocknight, and Mayor Palasic. If you so desire, I'll bring back a resolution at the next meeting to appoint those members to a six-year term.
I'm fine.
The next one is the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. The three members whose terms are expiring in December are Decatur Joseph, Lee Keeling, and Tom Halapasca. All three have expressed a desire to be reappointed and if you so desire, I'll bring back a resolution for those appointments.
Halapasca, are you willing to continue?
Yep.
Okay.
Double my pay, I'll keep doing it. Double nothing is nothing.
Very good. Okay, just bring them back as they're presented like that then. Thank you.
Our third report tonight is, you know, a few council meetings ago, we talked about online reporting and what the data was showing from citizens that turn in reports. So, OC's gonna talk about that. And OC, I know before you start that, are you planning on recognizing Joel Novasad sitting back there?
Yes, I wanted to bring him up here and introduce city council to Joel Novasad, who is our brand-new Commission and Visitor Bureau Director. Joel is, well, has been, just a quick background on him. He has been our marketing manager in the CBB for five years, was a top candidate during the application process. Thought it was a great time to promote someone from within that really has a lot of experience with the CBB, its goals and its plans moving forward. Very bright, intelligent young man and really very nice to be able to promote someone from inside the organization already. Has a lot of great tourism experience, so, this is Joel Novasad, our CBB director.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Sure.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having me up here this evening. I just want to let you know, I am very honored and excited for this position. As OC mentioned, I have been with the Victoria CBB since January of 2012. Have seen this, have seen this community grow tremendously in that time. We have an incredible staff there at the CBB, some great things lined up for this year and I really look forward to the future with what we can do.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
And, yes, as city manager said, the mayor had asked, I think, two meetings ago, what kind of usage we're getting out of some of our online customer service requests. And I've just got basically three slides. One of them is more on a slightly different topic. But in, the first slide is a basically a comparison site between 2014, 15, and year-to-date so far in 16. That online service request was activated the middle of 2014. Last year, the first full year where we actually had the service in place, we have a grand total of 584 service requests. Now, the, anyone requesting a service via the online website can do it in two ways. They can leave an email address, so they can be contacted and kept up to date on that service request, or they can submit an anonymous request. In that case, it comes to my department and then we basically forward it to the right department. The only difference being there is no update sent to the person requesting it because they didn't want to leave an email address. And obviously, looking at the records, we get a lot more of the anonymous requests than we do people wanting to leave their email address and get updated on it. It seems to be a very popular, very popular request format online, has been popular. And again, since it's been introduced, it continues to be pretty high response. The next report is a detail on, just really a breakdown in the current year on what are the most popular services that are being requested. Pothole repair tops the list, weedy lots, junk vehicles. You know, the whole idea behind the online service request is basically to save our customers the trouble of having to make a phone call to report such a request. And then it also saves the city time because directly, especially if they will leave an email address, it goes directly into our service request process and a ticket gets issued to it and immediately goes into operation. Again, the most popular one's pothole requests. If you look at junk vehicle, there's a couple of different listings, junk vehicle on the street, junk vehicle on the property. Those are really the way, the most popular service requests that we have. The third slide is really just a quick overview of where we are in current website usage. It really doesn't have anything to do with our online service requests, but you'll notice a big jump in usage between 209 and 210, 210 and 211, which is when we activated our, the current website we do have with Vision out of California. It is a website, the real update to that website was making it mobile device compatible. Has dynamic resizing in the HTML5 programming language. So, you'll notice on the second, third columns, our use of mobile devices on the web page is to browse it, just to use it for even the service requests and such, has increased dramatically since we updated our website. And I had made an error last time we talked about this. We are in our, I think, really get into our third year. We will get a free webpage redesign in year five from Vision as we continue to move forward with our contract with them. So, obviously, online has become a very popular way for people to report their service requests and just basically access all the website, the information, and other interactive features that we have on the website. And in that, the most rapidly part, the most rapidly growing part of those views is definitely having, happening in the, on the mobile platform. And all that's really gathered from the demographics and the analytics that we can pull from our website. You know, we have, just came back from really two conferences. There was a national conference in San Antonio and then we had a local communications conference in Dallas for a local statewide communications group. And both times, I got to visit with Vision. And when we look at where the future lies for online customer requests, how people access the website and stuff, certainly one of the big players is, in platforms we have to consider, is the social media. Is it, would it be possible for somebody to really initiate a, some sort of service request just via Facebook? A comment, comment, a post, or some sort of form they could fill out that might even negate and kind of make obsolete an official service form request? So, we had some very interesting discussions in what the future of websites are for municipalities given the rise and the popularity of the social media platforms. So, there's a lot of questions we'll ask as we start inching towards our webpage redesign in two years. And again, if I didn't mention that, that's done at no charge to the city as part of our contract with Vision, Communications out of California.
Very good. I would encourage people watching, you know, go out and walk out in front of your house and if you see a pothole, go back inside and report it. And of course, I don't want to overload the system. These numbers are good, but they could be a lot higher.
They can be a lot higher and, you know, we hadn't really analyzed the use of it all that much, but one of the things we're starting to do is analyze it on our social, we're starting, sorry, advertise and promote it on the social media platforms. That's really where communication seems to really be happening for municipalities and customers. Victoria isn't unique in that. I think Victoria, our population has really embraced social media, especially Facebook for Victoria. In other communities, it's Twitter's and in other communities, it's Instagram and it varies a little bit, but the social media platform seems to be the best way to communicate that. So, we're posting those links on our social media sites and on the website just as a way to get that used even more.
What I was gonna say is, let's not forget, we still take a lot of telephone calls. That's not captured in this analytics, but Lynn's work order system does capture all those telephone calls.
Very good point, yes.
But basically, you go to the City of Victoria website and you click on the service request and then there are a bunch of drop-down boxes.
That's right.
And if you do put your email address in, because I report potholes quite often, I get an immediate response that says they've gotten the message. And then, I guess, when the pothole gets repaired, I get another, they seem to be almost computer-generated. It's not like I'm getting, you know, junk mail from the, from the city after that. I just get responses.
That's exactly right. When the work order is complete, you'll get an email notification of that. So, you can, you're tracked on the, basically, that project as it moves forward.
And it's, you know, one of the things I always find myself reminding the public is we're not everywhere. We don't know about the problem. I've had people get angry with me about something. I said, well, did you tell anybody? That pothole will sit there, you know, and I'm so busy, I, like Jan, I'll stop and try to make a middle note because I like to take a picture of it and attach it. I don't always have time and I don't need to be using my phone while I'm driving. We all know that. We try to avoid that. But the public needs to understand, there is, there may be a weedy lot or a pothole or something and we're not, we don't see it and we, it's very appreciative when they do help us by telling us about it, so we can address it if possible.
Yeah, reporting it. You've got to report.
I hope this continues to get more usage and so that we can address these issues faster and more efficiently, so. Appreciate it.
I do want to make one comment about the pothole, though. We do have the city zoned in eight zones and so we are working in those zones. It's nice to get the phone calls, but even if you don't get the phone calls, we, our crews do get to those zones to fill those potholes in, so.
We have a memo in our, about that, which is, I appreciate that.
That reminder.
In your read file tonight, about that process. And I've noticed that when I have submitted one of these, I mean, within 24 or 48 hours, it's done. I don't know, but have you noticed that, Jan?
Yes, very much so.
Very timely, so.
Good point. The message, have the public report it. That's the quickest way to get those potholes repaired, really.
Yes, thank you.
Save our streets. Save our streets.
We're, citizens communications for those issues is not open again right now, but we can visit after the meeting, Mr. Martinez. Okay, so our last item, our city manager reports.
Yeah, it's, I have a report on there about the Victoria Parks Improvement Association, which is better known as the Riverside Golf Course, that's how the formal name. And the mayor did ask if Ken Miles is here. He is the president of the board. He is here tonight. He's got his hand, you might as well come on closer to the front, so, because I'm sure there'll be questions. But back in the spring, Mr. Miles contacted me about the golf course and that we're having some financial difficulties and ended their fiscal year with probably about $138,000 deficit. And so, throughout the last several months, the board has been working on what to do to correct that financial deficit and going forward. But they've also come to the city asking for assistance from us. And so, the last conversation we had is exactly what is the golf course asking for the city? And I want to talk about that tonight and then Mr. Miles is here to also talk about what they're doing. But we have a loan, golf course, we have a loan with golf course back, I don't, '06, I think. We built cart paths and financed those cart paths for the golf course and they've been paying us back for that. So, the loan pays off in 2021. But they're asking us to forgive that loan. They also have a credit line debt at one of the local banks, $160,000. They're asking for forgiveness. They would, they ask us to pay that off and they would pay us back for that if we would pay that off. Those are the two big financial asks that the board is asking for. We, throughout this process, so we've talked about the ability to place their property insurance on our insurance policy like we've done for the Texas Zoo, which would save them some money. They would reimburse us for that, though, for that premium. That's an option. We've also have offered an option where possibly they could use our cooperative purchasing agreements to purchase equipment if need be, but again, they would reimburse the city for that if that's something they'd like to do. We've also talked about helping in-kind, give advice, you know, provide oversight, financial oversight if they wish for us to do that. And then the Parks Department and the Utilities, Public Works Department has offered some in-kind service if they need to, you know, that, we do that for the zoo too and we're willing to do that for the golf course. But one of the things that they're working on right now is a financial plan, operational business plan, which I think is very important because that will give them the ability to determine what they can do going forward. The board's made some difficult decisions for the membership and I know some of those decisions have not been taken lightly. The decision wasn't taken lightly, so. But that's kind of where we're at today and so, I'm willing to let you know, that's what's going on. What I would like to do is see if counsel's willing for us to come back at the next meeting, do an amendment to the current contract to defer the current payments they owe us for the next few months so we can work with the golf course on that business plan. And then also, that amendment would allow them to, us to put them on the insurance, again, which they would have to pay us back and the corporate, the purchasing corporation if they would like to take advantage of that. But that's, I want to say too, they've created a subcommittee that is working diligently on this and I have a lot of confidence in the group that's working on that, that they do have the right mindset on getting the financial situation corrected at the golf course. But as far as paying their, excuse me, bank credit line off, I can't recommend that from a business perspective, even though they've offered to pay that back, so. But again, counsel has the final authority on that. But that's, that's my recommendation. That's kind of in a nutshell what's been going on with the golf course.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Miles, hold on a minute. Any, entertain some conversation between counsel, if you have any questions of staff before we open citizens communications back up. I just wanted to put some things into perspective, but Ms. Solis, go ahead.
What is the current balance on that loan?
The $180,000, about $180,000.
And what would the payments be that you're suggesting that we delay?
It's right at $3,000 and I'm rounding.
A month?
A month. And the delay would be during this time period for us to work on that financial and business plan and then possibly come back and restructure that loan, but also come back with a new contract, of course.
Just suspend that payment for a while to take that pressure off and then maybe restructure it at some point?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What was the original amount of the loan?
The loan was originally $382,000 with a 15-year note with an interest payment. So, if they take the 15 years to pay the entire loan off, it, it's about $534,000, which is principal and interest. It was a 15-year note.
Again, it was $180,000?
That's the balance.
That's the balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And the original amount?
$382. So, the, you know, the golf course has been there as long, as long as I can remember. I read some history on it a few years back. It's interesting how it was created. There was a lot of philanthropy among the community to get it started. It was part of Riverside Park. I don't know, Mr. Miles, if you've ever read that history, I'd like to find it again, you know, just for. But our current contract was redone in '06 and it runs through 2021. Okay. And the payment, the annual is that we, was restructured in '06. You know, and the payment for the use of the 200 acres was the payment on the loan itself, which is the about $3,000 a month. I think prior to that, I don't know if anyone here remembers, it was a very nominal- it was a very nominal, small amount. So, as opposed to the $3,000 a month, which it is now.
And, and one thing for us, I'm sorry, one thing for us to keep in mind, too, the golf, you know, the paths are, if the golf course is ever turned back over to the city, those are, those are our paths, you know, they're the city's paths.
Capital improvement to our property that we actually own anyway, so I understand. That is a very important point.
Is there any way to get a current history, this financial situation, past history on the financial situation of this current association that, that runs it?
A budget?
Yeah, like maybe past five to 10 years.
We would have to let maybe Mr. Miles into that.
Well, we've looked at, they, they have audit done every year. We've got financials on, the reality of it is their expenses have increased over the last couple of years greater than the revenues have increased. At the end of the day, that's why they had a deficit budget. Part of that, they were not running a deficit. But no, it's, it, that, and that's all part of us working on that business plan. So, but no, it's, very easily can give you, you know, finances. That's not a problem.
Just to get an idea of what the past history of financial problems were, maybe were, are, have been, or what direction they've gone in.
Okay. And just for clarity, again, you suggested we can allow property and liability insurance under our policy, which they would pay us back. That's a suggestion. A temporary suspension of the loan while maybe looking at it to restructure it. They, we'd like them to submit a business plan to staff to review. Of course, they can purchase equipment through our co-op if, if that offers them some savings, and then they, they just pay for it, but they just go through a while. So those are four points that I've heard you make tonight. There's suggestions. Those are not up for necessarily decisions at this point. They're suggestions. And we probably should hear from Mr. Miles now, and if, if you have comments or questions, come on forward. We're going to reopen Citizens Communications just to discuss the golf course issue, if anyone would like to. Go ahead.
Well, good af, good afternoon, or good evening. I think it might be, probably just easier, I'd sent this letter out Monday to the membership, and I think it would help clarify things if, if, if I, if I can go ahead and just read it out, out to y'all. I wrote this Monday, like I said, I, I sent this out to the membership. I said, and the letter states, Dear Riverside, Dear Riverside Golf Course members, I'm writing to you today because I felt necessary to communicate with the members of Riverside Golf Course and let you know what's happening. We've had, for a number of years, been in some serious debt. Our current final, financial situation is very serious. For a number of years, we've been borrowing money and trying to pay it back. When things improved for us financially, typically this would be in the late spring, or yeah, late spring, early summer, every year. Over the last 10 years, we've had to borrow money from the bank and then pay it back, more and more every year. This is not how to run a business. It has gotten us into a deep hole. Over the last couple of years, we've, we've tried doing a lot of different things to cut costs in different areas to help our bottom line. These cuts have helped us but have not made a significant difference. We're still struggling financially. Last month, the board made a, the Board of Directors made a very difficult decision to close nine holes. It was either, is either that or File Chapter 11. Yes, folks, bankruptcy. It's that, it's that bad. Our financial state has never been lower. We realized as a board that we need to do something immediately, or there would not be a Riverside Golf Course. There are many factors, as you know, and the biggest and the most obvious is cost. It takes a tremendous amount of money to run the golf course, or to run 27 holes. Closing nine holes will save us approximately $80,000 a year. This will help, but will still not be enough. So we've also decided, and had some discussions with the City of Victoria, since we leased the land from the city and are in a contract, a contractual agreement with them, it is necessary for us, is necessary for us to let them know of our situation. The City of Victoria supports our decision to close the nine holes after they, and after they reviewed our, our finances, their comment was, what took you so long? We've asked the City of Victoria to help us financially, as well as helping us to run the golf course in a more, more like a business. We, the board, VPIA, and the city realize that if we don't aggressively pursue a business plan and get back on track, we are headed for certain doom. Let me assure you that the current Board of Directors that is in place right now, the Board of Directors you elected, is doing an excellent job. I, as, as president, am proud to be part of this team, and we are finally starting to move in a positive direction. In addition, VPIA is contractually committed to the city of Victoria to provide and operate and, and the only public golf course in Victoria County. The board members of VPIA, elected by the members of Riverside, represent the organization. The members and is, and is obligated to fulfill, fulfill the requirements of, and the contract with the city. Respect, respectfully yours, Kenneth E. Miles, VPIA President. I hope that helped.
Yes, very good. So the board has made the decision to close the holes already?
That went into effect today.
Okay, okay. Very good. And Council will certainly weigh in, but I would sup, suffice to say that what we'll do is continue to work with you, and the City Manager can be the conduit for that, and the points that she made earlier, some of those points should certainly help. I know, speaking as, in my position, I would like to see the golf course continue and be successful. I know we're going to do what we can to help with that. I mean, you guys have been out there quite a while, and I, you know, there are, Council, there are requirements where they submit monthly financials, by the way.
Right.
For review, to the Parks Director, who then shares those, I think, with the City Manager and things like that.
Finance.
So I would like to see us continue to work together to see what, fine tune some of the options that were mentioned, and see where that gets you, if that's agreeable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Council?
Mr. Miles, for the, for the public's knowledge, which, which nine is being closed?
It's a series of, well, it's not, we have the red, we have the white, and we have the blue.
Okay.
It's most of the white and some of the red. If that makes sense.
Okay.
What we did is we looked at it, we, we formed a subcommittee, and they, they looked at different situations. They looked at different holes that, where the greens didn't do real well, or the fairways would hold a lot of water, or we just had problems. And it cost us money to maintain those holes. It was, it was a, a big factor. And then just the layout of it, trying to, to make it work. Some of the holes will, will use, some of the greens will actually use as, as a, a nursery to help with the other greens. We'll, we'll keep them working so we can take grass from them and rebuild the other greens, as well as some of the fairways. But majority of it will be closed.
With the reconfiguration, will the golf, the, the cart paths be congruent?
I have a actual layout here, if you want, you want to look at it. Can pass it around and take a look. That's okay?
I know that, you know, in prior years, when our budget, we, we had some pretty good budget years there, where we had a little excess sales tax and discretionary spending. In 2012 and 2013, those two budgets, each year, we, we did chip in $37,000, $500, $37,500 to redo some of the greens.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I will say this, again, just speaking from my own point of view, this year's budget's extremely tight for us. We have virtually no discretionary money, and, you know, unless Gilbert gives us some good news on some sales tax, unanticipated collections, but I don't think that's going to happen. So I just want to throw that out there. We, we do want you to succeed, and we'll try the best we can.
How many tournaments do y'all do a year?
Sure.
How many tournaments do y'all do a year?
Well, we have our, our Wild Game Tournament, we have our Labor Day Tournament, and then we have different tournaments that go on, going on out there throughout the year. I would say probably six to eight different tournaments going on that we do every year, plus there's other ones that come in. And we've actually got a couple of new ones.
Do they generate a lot of people staying in hotels from out of town?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think that's a good point for Thomas to explain hotel tax for sporting events because Riverside has talked, the golf course has talked to us about potentially using that, and the hurdle for them to qualify is pretty steep.
Several years ago, the golf course approached the committee who oversees the, the hot funds allocations with a proposed request for funds. And at that time, the tournaments that were being run by the golf course did not qualify for hot funds. Unlike all of the other categories of hot funds, sporting events have a special additional requirement that they must meet, that 50% or more of the participants must be from out of town. Since the golf tournaments at that time were targeting locals, they did not meet that criteria, and they were not eligible for hot funds.
Okay. The map is helpful. You may want to share that with the public at some point. I'm, I'm sure all your members, you're sharing that with them.
It's posted at, at the clubhouse.
Right. Yeah, it's posted at Riverside.
Okay.
We have a big one posted at Riverside.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's more discussion, I, I mean, I, John works with, with the Victoria Parks and Improvement. He's been just tremendous helping me. He's actually heading up the subcommittee for our, our business plan, and he's just doing a, an outstanding job. We've got also additional help from the outside, not just the Board of Directors, but some folks from the outside have actually come in to help us with our business plan.
Very good.
And he's, if there's more, if the, if the Council has more questions, you know, if I can have him up here, we can, we can talk about it some more.
I mean, everything I've heard from the City Manager so far is, you know, you're looking at trimming expenses, and you're going to have to adjust your revenue stream, and then it, it requires some prices to be raised, unfortunately, which is just part of the process. And it's, and I, I think your board, from what I've heard, a lot of positive things. You are well aware of that. And in order to continue the long-term viability of this course, we're going to have to do it. We've got to make some decisions. And your first decision of closing those holes was not easy, but you did it, and I commend you for that.
Yes, sir.
Let's see if we can't make it all work out. Okay.
It definitely shows the quality of your board when things are running rough.
Yeah.
Fix them, not when they're running smooth.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Council, any further questions for Mr. Miles? If there's any, right, Citizens Communication is open for this one issue. If anyone else would like to speak just about the golf course, now would be the time to come forward. Just the golf course, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Before we think about golf course, you know, I don't know anything about golf, playing golf, but I have friends that do. But the park belongs to the people, not the golf association, all right? Let's give the people back the park and put the golf somewhere else before we decide, you know, making your budget plans or whatever, whatever you've got to do. Let's think about putting it somewhere else and give the, you know, give the people back the park. You know, the people have a park, but it's by the river. You have to go by the river to get it by the park. The Lions Club, Conans Club, they all have private sections in there. You can't go in there. So let's think about putting it somewhere else, you know, and give the park back to the people. That's my recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Okay, I'm going to, you know, Citizens Communication's still open. I see no one else getting up. Okay, we'll close Citizens Communication on that one particular item. Do we have any further business?
No, sir.
Well, that concludes our business, and we're adjourned. Thank you very much.